So let's start if we've got everybody in position. So I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. School committee meeting for May the 6th, 2020. Our first item is a pledge of allegiance. So we've got the flag in John's office. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Right. Okay, our first item, our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for April 15th. Did everybody have a chance to look at those minutes from our last meeting?
I actually didn't. Were they in the folder?
Yes.
All right, so I missed them, but I'm sure they're fine.
Okay, okay. Any? Yeah, yeah, okay. So could I have a motion then to approve the minutes of April 15th, 2020, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and then all in favor, and we have to do this roll call thing, don't we? So Matt?
I.
Peter?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
And Julia?
I.
Okay. Now, Dr. Antonucci, oh no, public comment. So Dr. Antonucci, do you want to take control of the microphones and stuff for public comment?
Sure, I would just ask, there's a hand raise feature on the, on the bottom here, under reactions. Oh no, is that, I take that back. You know, we have a small enough group.
It's under participants.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. So under participants, I don't have that for some reason, I've managed participants. So if you could just either like physically raise your hand, I can try to call on you individually.
Great.
I have to jump a couple of screens here. Is there someone who would like to say something at this point? If I don't see you, just call out. I don't see any, don't see anybody at this point, Julia.
Okay, great. If we've missed you for some reason, we have, we can do another public comment at the end. It's not on the agenda, but we usually do have a second public comment.
That's just, that's a mistake on my part, so yeah, we'll make sure we have public comment.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so Dr. Antonucci, we have your report as the first item from the next section of the meeting.
Yeah, I just, I just have a couple of quick things. First, first, and I sent this out in a message to the community this week, but I just want to give kind of a quick shout out and advertisement for the Duxbury Rotary Club. They have a, I think, I forget the name of it, Helping Neighbors, Good Neighbor Fund, I guess it's called. And they are actively looking for families who may be having financial difficulties right now during, you know, due to the coronavirus crisis and the lockdown. And they are fundraising, fundraising, and they're just making contributions to families in need. And so they're just looking for us to help spread the word and help with identifying families. And I, again, I shared it, I shared it pretty publicly and also on social media, but there's a phone number, which I'll read out, and also a website that people can visit. And the phone number is 781-285-6242. So that's 781-285-6242. And the URL is www.duxburyrotary.com. So if you visit that, duxburyrotary.com, it'll give you more information about their efforts and about the fund. And I, you know, thank you very much to Duxbury Rotary. And please, if you have family or friends who you think could benefit, please, please send them, please send them to the Rotary. Or if you want to contact us confidentially, we can help make that connection. So that's it, I just want to make a quick advertisement for them. Second thing is, this is kind of random, completely unrelated, but just random, some stuff we've been working on. But among our many things that we're working on right now, we are looking ahead to next year. Still not sure, I think I have some people in the waiting room, excuse me. We're looking ahead, we don't know what the year is going to look like yet. But one thing we're having to look at is our custodial and maintenance protocol. And I just wanted to kind of quick shout out to Brian Cherry, but Brian Cherry's been working with some of our vendors, looking at ways to enhance our cleaning and disinfecting protocol. And I actually worked with him this week, we met with, we met with three different vendors who were doing demos, and we really expect to come back kind of leaner and meaner and more efficient. And there's going to be a need for us to do a lot more disinfecting, so to speak, on a very regular basis. So I like to think that we're going to be a leader in this area, but I just kind of want to point that out. It's, there's a million things we could point to, to what we're working on right now. But it's, I don't think people realize that, you know, that type of thing that we're having to consider. But we expect to roll out a pretty, pretty robust plan, and it's going to take an investment. And so Katie's involved as well in our planning, but it was just something we worked on the last couple of days. I just wanted to kind of point that out while, while we're here. So anyway, thanks to Brian and Katie, and you know, we'll come back pretty strong in that area. We have to, we have no choice.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Me right now.
Okay, Dr. Klingerman, what would you like to report?
You're on mute, Danielle.
There we go.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to remind our school committee, as well as our families, that we have that presentation coming up on Friday afternoon this week. So it's Friday, May, I don't even know what day we're on, 8th. At 1 o'clock, we have Lynn Lyons, who is going to be doing a presentation for Duxbury families and community about just parenting and managing during this unconventional time that we find ourselves in. And I was able to listen to Lynn do this presentation a few weeks ago, and I just found it to be really helpful and reassuring, because I think that all of our families are probably in that same state of anxiety right now, worrying about their students falling behind, especially if you've got kids at the high school who are going to be looking to apply for colleges and just all those worries that just seem to be piling up week after week. So I'm hoping that everyone gets a lot out of that presentation. And Dr. Antonucci and I will be sending another reminder with a link to be able to attend that. If you can't attend live at 1 o'clock, Lynn has graciously allowed us to record the presentation, which typically wouldn't be the case, which we'll be able to post it on our website for a couple of days after. So families that can't make it at 1 o'clock can still benefit from that. And my other piece that I wanted to share is just, it's Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurse Appreciation Week. And with that, I just want to formally thank the Duxbury teaching staff for everything they've done to keep learning happening for our students. We are really fortunate to have an incredible staff of teachers and nurses and instructional assistants, and we couldn't be prouder or more grateful for the work and their creativity during this time. Changing over to remote learning during this pandemic has certainly not been an easy task for our public school educators in Duxbury and across the country. These are real people with real lives and real worries, and they continue to adjust to best meet the needs of our students and families each week. The metamorphosis in teaching really happened overnight, from that day we went home on March 13th until today, where we find ourselves still working remotely. But we are committed to improving what we're doing week after week, and we're having many, many meetings and conversations with families and teachers and administrators to improve what we're doing. So with that said, I just want to point out, our remote learning philosophy is exactly the same as the mission, vision, and core values that we identified in our strategic plan work last year, and the core of which is that students always come first. And with that, we aren't able to make a one-size-fits-all response to what individual learning needs for students would look like. We have some students that are literally working from morning till night every single day to get their work done, and we have other students that are able to kind of fly through their work and maybe are looking for more. So I would just ask that we always show our teachers the respect they deserve of bringing concerns directly to them if your child needs anything, if that's more work or less work, more or less contact, individual support on a particular skill, or just a boost if anyone's struggling during this time. Because if teachers don't hear directly from parents or students, they may make the assumption that their remote learning plan is working for everybody. And I think we all know that many of our middle and high school students are very unlikely to reach out to their teacher on their own and ask for help. So I feel like sometimes we have to, as parents, advocate for our students' needs, even if they don't want us to. So this may be the strangest Teacher Appreciation Week we've ever experienced in our careers, and none of us expected to be in this situation, but I know we'll all come out stronger in the end because of it, and we'll continue to learn along the way.
Great, thank you very much. Mrs. Blake, you have a report for us?
So I'm going to defer my report until the discussion item section of the meeting.
Okay.
That's okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Okay, yes, that'll be fine. And then, we haven't got a student with us, do we? John, we don't, no students, okay. Okay, and then as chairman, I'd just like to, to follow on Dr. Klingerman's comments and thank all our staff and administrators and families for, you know, trying to, trying their best through this difficult time. I think we were all hoping that it would be shorter than it has become, and so there's been a kind of, I don't know, emotional setback, realizing that at the end of the school year, we still won't see each other so in person. So, and many, many things are unsettled. We're still waiting for guidance from the Department of Education as to what's going to be feasible in September. And so there's a lot of work to be done still. And so I appreciate everybody working so hard on this kind of continual development of what our remote learning program is going to look like. But that's it for me. Any other members of?
Can I pop in?
Yes, of course.
It looks like we've set the prom and graduation dates tentatively, if we can do those in August? No?
I completely forgot to mention that, Kelly. I, I'm so mad at myself, that was, I knew I had.
Hey, I got a junior, the dress is hanging upstairs.
I knew I had a third thing, and I couldn't, for the life of me, I couldn't remember. My stickies only get two things. Yeah, just, all tentative, but you know, we, we've been working a lot with the students, and it's, you know, near unanimous desire from the students to have an in-person graduation specifically. And I don't know if that's going to be possible or not, but our tentative in-person graduation date is August 8th, with the idea that we might be able to do a prom the night before, on August 7th. We're hopeful that we can pull some, if not all, of that off. Time is going to tell, and we're going to have to adjust, we're going to have to adjust if that's not feasible. But we want to give the kids the send-off they deserve, they want to be together. So we thought it was prudent to push it off till late summer. We still are planning on doing something special on kind of the traditional graduation day. What that looks like remains to be seen. You know, it may, it may be some caravan of administrators going through town, delivering diplomas and taking pictures, or you know, some, something like that. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're putting our thinking caps on and seeing what's feasible and doable and also fun, you know, for the students, so stay tuned. But thank you, Ms. President, for bringing that up, that's a very important thing I missed.
Great. Anybody else? How good.
Yeah, I would just, I want to second your remarks, Julia, and ask, you know, John and Danielle, if you could express our thanks to, you know, our medical nursing staff, but also our faculty, teaching assistants, instructional aides. The whole rubber hits the road for our students, you know, is largely through the work of our people that come into contact with them daily in the classroom. So, you know, really on behalf of the community and the school committee, if you wouldn't mind, just let the teachers know, we're highly appreciative, we're thinking of them. They have, as they're having to professionally change what they do in a pretty dramatic way. So I'm very grateful, and I know all of us are, so just please spread the word from us.
We will. I do, one of the most, I think that what Danielle said was brilliant, but one of the most important things she said was that these, these employees are real people with real families and real problems of their own. And so I just think we have to be patient and understanding and empathetic to the situation. You know, and I know she also mentioned this, you know, one-size-fits-all plan during a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic is not reasonable, and it's not rational to think that that's possible. And so I think we, you know, I think we're doing a very good job, we continue to make improvements. There's been a handful of people making sweeping generalizations. And all we ask them to do is focus on their student. And if they have a specific issue, to go to the teacher or go to the principal. Facebook typically isn't the best place to air questions. We're here to support people, but we have to remember that there are human beings that we're dealing with every day. So don't mean to jump on that bandwagon, but I just want to reiterate that point. And Peter, we will pass, we will pass your gratitude on. These people couldn't be working any harder, we're really proud of what they do. They're working seven days a week right now, just to keep up. And so, you know, kudos to them, and we're going to continue to do better. I mean, we know we have to make tweaks, and we, you know, every day we're talking to our staff, changing directives, speaking to other superintendents, speaking to other administrators and districts. But, you know, patience is really important. This is a truly life-changing and life-altering moment we're living through. So I would just ask people to, you know, to show a little more empathy and patience during this time.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from members of school committee? Are we good? Okay, our next on the agenda are discussion items, and the first one is Duxbury Education Foundation.
Yeah, so.
Tanya?
Tanya is here.
Yep. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us, and thank you to the school committee as well for inviting the DEF to attend today's meeting. It's typically a tradition for the DEF to come before the school committee at this time of the year with a great big check, which I actually did haul out of storage, and I have it behind us, and I'll show you that in a minute. But just, you know, to thank the administrators and the teachers for all of their thoughtful grant applications this year, and to thank the Duxbury community, our businesses, and our families for their generous donations to the DEF to help us support innovative programming for the Duxbury Public Schools. A sampling of some of the grants that we have awarded this year include an MIT, that is the Mass Institute of Technology, DNA/RNA Protein Synthesis Lego Kit. It's for the Duxbury High School Biology classes. Really cool to help them better understand in a tactile manner how the DNA and RNA work. Another one is a yoga training grant, and then a separate grant for equipment for yoga for both Duxbury High School and Duxbury Middle School. There was a grant for cognitive behavioral therapy skills training for DHS psychologists to help students with anxiety. There was a grant for all of the Chandler kindergarten teachers to provide monthly STEAM projects with their classrooms. There are three Fit Desk stationary bikes that are going into the DMS DHS library, which are pretty fun. And there's a Social Emotional Learning Challenge Day that's going to be held in the fall for 108th graders to encourage empathy and compassion in the student body. That's just a sampling of what we granted this year. The total grants came to about a little over $22,000. And so typically, we accept grant applications in the spring, but this year we reverted to a rolling grants process. So grants were accepted from teachers and administrators from September all the way through April 30th. So it was a new process we were instituting this year. We didn't get quite as many grant applications as we would have liked, and we hope that we can ramp that up next year, because we are here for the community, and we will support you all in whatever way we can, because of the uncertainty of next year, we will be here for you. So wanted to let you know that. The check, grab it, is to commemorate the past 30 years. The DEF was originally founded in 1989, and since that time, we've been able to raise and grant over $1.7 million, which is pretty amazing. Thank you. We celebrated our 30th anniversary this year, and hope to be here for the next 30 to support Duxbury Public Schools. So thanks again for having me today.
Awesome.
Well, thank you, Tanya, that's wonderful. And, and thank you for commemorating all the prior work that's been done, because, you know, each, each year we get new projects coming through, thanks to the DEF. And then they, they're adopted, and they're put into practice in schools, and they make such a difference. And so it's nice to look back at, at all those grants that have, many of them today still have impact on our kids' education. So thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Julia, just one comment, Tanya, thank you so much.
Yes.
DEF is such a great partner to us, and we appreciate everything you do for us, and I know our teachers do too. So thank you very much, and we look forward to doing some in-person work in the near future. So thanks.
Absolutely.
Exactly, great. Okay. The next item on our agenda is also to do with money, but perhaps not as wonderful as DEF, but equally important. So Mrs. Blake, would you take us through the quarterly financial report, please?
Sure, sure. So I think, let me see if I can, so I just have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
If I can.
Katie, can you share, or do you need me to?
It's, it says that it's disabled, so if you could.
Hold on one second, see if I can.
Yeah. So I just wanted to mention too, that the quarterly reports, so the format is very similar to the quarterly reports that have been presented in the past. So the beginning of the report is just the memo that has the details with some of the expenditures. It includes the numbers, the financial piece, and some of the percentages. And then there are the financials that are attached. So the first financial just has the expenses, the encumbrances, and then it also lists out the offsets that we had originally committed to the budget. And then I also included a secondary financial that has some modified offsets, and there's information on those modifications in the presentation as well. So we'll talk about that toward the end of the presentation.
You should be okay, Katie. No? Still can't share, Katie?
Oh, let me try it.
Hey.
Awesome.
Okay.
Excuse me.
There we go. Okay, so, so just starting at the beginning, so the expenses and the encumbrances, I typically break them out with our salary expenditures and then the general expense expenditures. And of course, this is just the quarterly report from the third quarter, which is as of March 31st, 2020. So the salary expenditures, as of the end of the third quarter, is $19,615,630. So that was 66%, which was tracking right as expected. And then we also have a total number for our salary encumbrances. So again, the encumbrances is the expenses that we have put in our accounting system, and that is just reflected of expenses that we know that we will incur in the fourth quarter of the year 20. And that's just over the $10 million, so it's $10,217.22, and that is 34%. So the balance, which includes the original fiscal year 20 offset, so the offsets, again, that's, we have offsets that are tuition that we receive from some of our fee-based programs. We have a number of grants, we have state grants and federal grants, and then we also receive some circuit breaker reimbursement. So the balance, including some of those offsets, is for our salary lines as of the end of the third quarter, is $754,543, and that's in the salary category. So I listed out here, so some of the expenses, so it does seem like a large number, but then I wanted to include some of the expenses that we anticipate that we will incur in the fourth quarter that aren't necessarily reflected in the salary encumbrance number. So some of those expenses include expenses that we'll pay for stipends. So we do have mentor stipends, co-curricular stipends, and athletic stipends. And then the estimated number on those stipends is $264,701. And then we also have an allocation for our school resource officers. So we split the cost of our one school resource officer with the town. So that allocation number, we haven't received the actual number from the police department, but the number that we have budgeted is just over $35,000. And so we have that number as an outstanding salary expense. And then we also have a number of fringe benefit expenses that we will pay out in the next few payroll cycles, and that's almost $21,000. And then we have a number of hourly expenses that are not encumbered. So with all of that, those expenses that are outstanding but not encumbered, the total outstanding estimate is $346,027, and that's for our salary expenses. So I also wanted to provide some information, there's been, so a lot of the expenditures up until March 31st are reflective of a lot of what we had budgeted for last year in anticipation for fiscal year 20, and not, obviously not realizing what was going to occur at the end of the third quarter. So we have had some impacts, and I just wanted to give you a high-level detail on some of the expense changes that we will see due to the shift in remote learning. So we certainly expect that we will have some savings in our substitute and our overtime budget. So we'll show a reduction in the use for our daily substitute teachers. And I think it's very important, I just wanted to point out, it's for daily substitute teachers. So we do still have some staff that are on extended leave. So we are still, we do still have a number of long-term sub-teachers that are. So we are still, we do still have a number of long-term sub-teachers that are covering class and we're still covering those expenses. But it's just the daily substitute teachers that that we should have some savings in. And then we'll also have a reduction in the need for block coverage, lunch coverage, and some of the detention coverage that we typically will spend during the fourth quarter. And then there's also a reduction in the use of our overtime and all of our overtime budgets. And then we're we'll also see a reduction in some of the stipends that are paid. Some of the stipends will be prorated to reflect some of the programs that have been affected by the school closure and the shift to remote learning. So there will be a change in the budget or some savings found with some of our stipend expenditures for salaries. So shifting over to the general expenses, so we have, of course, our general expense expenditures. So general expenses, just as a reminder, that's our instructional materials. It's any expenses for our contracted services, so transportation, out-of-district tuition, and then just other miscellaneous expenses. So the general expense expenditures as of March 31st, so the end of the the third quarter for fiscal year 20, is $5,281,18. And then we also have a number of general expense encumbrances as well. So just over $2 million, so $2,013,651. And that is expenses that we know that are committed to the budget. We have them reflected in our accounting software. And it could be any utility expenditures, some of the earmarks for some of our contracted services that we were anticipating on spending out in other services. So the balance, including our original fiscal year 20 offset committed, is $1,264,189. And so similar to our salary expenses, I just listed out some of the expenses that we have outstanding that are not included in that encumbrance figure. So we do have a number of technology expenses that we believe that we will incur by the end. So in the fourth quarter of fiscal year 20. So some of those expenses are, we're still having to repair some of the Chromebooks and laptops and some of our other technology. We'll have some material purchases with monitors, projectors, and potentially some staff laptops. We also have some outstanding expenses with our operations and maintenance, so just under $200,000. We've had a number of storms with some pretty significant winds that has done some pretty significant damage to some of the areas around campus. So there's just about $20,000, just over $20,000 that we'll have to spend to do some storm repairs. We also have some state mandated inspections that are coming up that we need to enter in encumbrances for. We'll have a number of cleaning supplies, making sure that we're integrating all of those disinfecting protocols and making sure that the buildings are safe and clean for everyone who is accessing them. And then just some other miscellaneous projects and supplies. We also have a number of course reimbursements. We have graduation expenses that we still will have to pay for this year. We have miscellaneous expenses, so there's a number of outstanding general expenses. So the estimate that I have at this point in time is $511,478. And that again is for the general expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. So similar to our salary expenses, we have absolutely seen some changes due to the shift to remote learning. So we have had a decline in the request for instructional material purchases. So of course, not having the buildings open and not having the students in the classrooms has definitely led to a reduction in the use of consumables. So for some of our technology education, family and consumer science, also not having the students in the buildings and in the classrooms, there's been a decline in the purchase for nursing supplies, even general classroom supplies, paper postage. And we're also looking at some reductions to our contracted services. So I had mentioned it just briefly at our previous meeting, but we're expecting that there should be a reduction in the payment to our transportation vendors. So and I just want to mention that that's an ongoing conversation that we're having with both our yellow bus transportation providers and our special education out-of-district transportation providers. So we're certainly negotiating, hoping that that will lead to some savings in the operating budget. Also savings due to some professional development, utilities, not having the usage for some heat or some of the energy, and also savings with trash recycling. And the last bullet point is we're also seeing some savings in our equipment or payers. So we have some budget lines throughout the district for equipment repair, whether it be some science equipment or nursing supplies. We have equipment repair for the music department. So we've certainly seen a reduction in expenses due to a reduction in use. And I just want to point out, we're seeing that reduction in expenses right now because the students are not in the building. But I do expect when we do get back to having the the students in the classrooms and touching and using all of these materials and then bringing back Chromebooks and bringing back instruments and other things, I do expect that there will be a need for some repairs. So we certainly will have to utilize those budgets in future fiscal years. And so this portion right here, and so I had put information in the quarterly report just alluding to, there are multiple fee-based programs that have been impacted by the shift to remote learning. And so I just wanted to talk about three of the programs that we're proposing that we may potentially process some refunds back to the families. So the first program, of course, being our spring athletic payment. So as everyone is familiar, I'm sure, with the athletic payments are made by season. So earlier, you know, towards the end of the winter, families paid their fee for the spring season. And of course, the spring season was canceled. So we're suggesting and making the recommendation that we refund those payments to families. Another item for consideration is our kindergarten tuition. So so we are still operating our fee-based full-day kindergarten program. Our tuition is $4,000, or if there is a family with multiples, it's $6,000, and that's for the school year. And then we do have a sliding scale based off of the family's financial position. So there are different tuition rates. And I listed those rates out both in the memo and on this slide. And because of the shift to remote learning and because of how the the day is structured for these students, I'm proposing that we refund. And so it's a portion of their tuition payment that they were allocated for the year. It's the portion of the year that's remote learning. And so that's what these refunds are reflective of is pretty much from that March 13th date on, just refunding that tuition payment that was made for those families that pay for full-day kindergarten. And then the last bullet point on this slide is very similar to kindergarten. We also have our preschool tuition and our preschool, our integrative preschool program that is also fee-based. And it's a very similar, very similar situation that we're facing similar to kindergarten, where we have our families that are paying for our peer students for preschool. And they pay monthly payments. So the proposal is to refund their tuition for the months of April, May, and June. And so I put the total refund amount due to the family. And so the total refund amount is, would be reflective of a portion of our offset utilization because that's money that we're returning back. So it's essentially money that we're saying it's it's almost earmarking it as a usage. And then the last point I just wanted to review, and this was towards the end of the the report memo, is just a proposed modification for some of our offsets. So as I had mentioned, we're really looking at a pretty grim outlook for fiscal year 21. So all of the conversations that we've heard is there'll be a pretty significant reduction in the state budget and the local budgets. And so in looking at our budget for this fiscal year and then looking at the situation that we'll be faced with next fiscal year, I, we took a look at some of the offsets and some of the offset utilization that we have for fiscal year 20. And so one of the proposals would be just to reduce the offset that we'll be using for this fiscal year with the hopes of being able to roll that offset forward into the upcoming fiscal year, so fiscal year 21. And then that money will be available to us. So if we had to increase any of the offsets that we already committed to the fiscal year 21 budget in order to make up for the difference of any of the funding that we'll be receiving, that it certainly could help us for the future fiscal year. This wouldn't be, so this would not be something that would be sustainable in the fact that we'd be able to sustain that level of offset application to the operating budget and the expenses. It would just be potentially for fiscal year 21. But it certainly will help if we're faced with some of the reductions that we're kind of caring about now. So and if there's, if I could answer any questions, if there's anything that was unclear, certainly happy to do that.
Katie, I have a question.
Sure.
Or John, most of our student, kindergarten students are full day, right? There's a small number that are half-day?
Yes. Yep.
I think you said that by law, we have to provide half-day?
We have to offer it, yes.
Okay. So the classroom learning that they're getting remotely equates to the half-day?
More like, more like a half-day than a full-day, yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted clarification on that. That's what I had read. And then as far as the SRO goes, Officer Bowles, sorry, John, are we talking?
I just, we have six half-days, six half-day students, just.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was low. And then Officer Bowles, I assume, is still in the building, the SRO? Because we have staff there and cleaning out lockers. And I know the staff that that his salary is already encumbered and it's for the new person and it's a done deal, but just a question about him and what.
Yeah. So I mean, let me put it this way, he's he's available to us 24/7. So I just want to say that. But also remember, he's a full-time, he's a full-time police officer. So he's still working his regular shift. He's obviously in the building less than he would be, you know, when school's in session. But he is still, he's still part of our team on an ongoing basis.
Yeah. And he does a lot of outreach with families that needed and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Katie, my question, oh, go ahead, Julia, you were just about to.
No, I was hoping that you were going to say something and then I'll follow you.
Well, I was just, it's very well laid out. So from the standpoint of clarity, it's it's really clear. So thank you for that because it's, you know, this is easy to get turned around the axle a bit. My question is, when we last met, the state was providing guidance related to how to handle relationships with contracted services that were not being provided. Has, can you give us an update on what the state is thinking? Are they leaving it to the towns to negotiate directly? Just maybe give us an update there.
Sure, yes. So the state has passed legislation that will allow us to make payments. So we will be allowed to make payments to our contracted services providers for a continuation of service, even if we do not have services rendered. So I have any concerns about if we are making payments. And it goes against master general law. We should be fine there. So I can absolutely say that. And so, but they have not given us any guidance as to, they said you're allowed to make payments, but there has been no guidance in saying you're allowed to make payments and you should pay 50% or you should pay 75%. They've absolutely left that up to the local level to be able to make the decision between the the district or the region and then the the contracted services provider. So we are still having those discussions. I just mentioned that with a little bit earlier, we're still having those discussions with our our school bus, our transportation providers, so yellow bus and our special education transportation providers. And so it's just ongoing negotiations at this point.
Okay. And is the is the 200,000 an assumption of an outcome? And is that the one that's got the most risk out of that 740?
So the two, yes, absolutely. So that's definitely an assumption of an outcome. And there could be some, definitely, there's some, that number is probably the most fluid.
Okay.
So, so absolutely. And I think it could fluctuate either way. So, but I certainly think if we are able to not spend that $200,000 and then roll that into fiscal year 21, it's absolutely going to help us offset some of the the costs that we'll see in fiscal year 21. So.
Okay. And then just the third part of my question was, you know, our our practice has been with the SPED revolving fund that surpluses that were turned over to the town would be deposited into the SPED reserve. And I imagine that's all bets are off for this year. Is that right? Do you remember what the number was that was anticipated, was it 300,000 or something like that?
Go ahead. Yeah, it's okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I think it's very clear. I understand where the risk is there. And I think with the risk to the town's finances, I think this is very sensible, right? Because we may not have the stabilization fund deposits that we had anticipated.
Right.
Right.
Certainly is not excessive in terms of what we're likely to be faced with next year in terms of our budget, whenever that gets finalized. So that all makes sense to me.
Peter, this year, this year, just to clarify on the SPED reserve fund, we were planning on turning money back at the end of the year. So any any surplus, so to speak, from the school department would roll into that automatically. Ironically, the budget was in pretty good shape this year. And so they were also planning on putting another chunk into that. So there's still a possibility that our end-of-year balance, some of it will go into the SPED reserve?
From last year, right, that what we turned over last year.
Well, this year, this year too. But that extra money is likely not going to end up in, they're going to have to use that for some unemployment expenses that were obviously unanticipated.
Right. So refresh my memory, it was around 130 that we had turned over at the end of last fiscal year? And they were planning to put in an additional 200, I think?
Two, I thought it was 250 or something like.
Yes.
So we turned back our surplus at the end of last fiscal year was just over 104,000. And then I think the additional allocation that the town was, had originally proposed on the warrant was going to be 250,000.
But do you think that 104 might go in whenever we have town meeting?
I do.
Okay, great.
I can't confirm that, but I mean, I, we haven't, no indication otherwise. You know, I just want to go back to the transportation for a minute. Katie's doing a great job with it. And we're really kind of gathering data, but I just want to say, we, we're pushing pretty hard with our with our bus providers for them to be a little more transparent with their books. Because there's a, you know, there's personnel costs, right? Because there's a, you know, there's personnel costs, right? With a contract. And then there's fixed costs, you know, the cost of their capital cost, buses, rent, maintenance, insurance, all those things. So we're asking them to be a little more transparent for us to be able to make a more kind of informed decision about what we think is fair to pay, if anything. So that's where we are right now with them.
Yeah, and if I can just add it's and we kind of I've been referring referencing a continuation of services, but it's certainly all of the payments that we would be making to the transportation providers would just be to ensure that there would that there will be buses sitting in a lot, ready to go, that are inspected and that are road ready and that are safe for our kids when we are able to be transporting them back to school. So it's just there's different components in the contract that we do feel that we we should we should, we could, and we should make payments to have that continuity of service. And there's other, there's certainly other sections that are almost non-negotiable.
Right, great, okay.
Katie, where does the vocational transportation fall? And are we getting a savings on that, voc ed?
Yep, so so that's similar, so vocational transportation, that's also, that's a great question. That's very similar, so we use the same transportation provider that we use for some of our special education students as well. And so there absolutely could be some savings there. And that's that's still an ongoing conversation, but yes, yep, absolutely could see some savings.
Have we had any indication from the town about what they're thinking about? Well, you mentioned the free cash was likely, the allocation from free cash to the Special Education Reserve Fund was likely to be reduced, but what about the operating budget itself for fiscal 21? Because the town meeting is coming up and if they're thinking of adjusting what a figure that we've already voted on, it would be nice to know that.
Yeah, we Julie, we don't have a hard, we don't, they don't have a hard number yet.
Okay.
And I think that's a good thing because I we know there's going to be some hit, okay?
Sure.
It could be, and it could be significant, you know, I mean, if you read the newspaper, they were talking, you know, 4%.
Right.
4% reduction, well, doesn't sound like a lot, but it's, you know, it's like 1.3 million dollars or something. I mean, it's a huge, it would be draconian and devastating to the school department, right? So I I give John Adams and Rainey a lot of credit because they're just being patient, right?
Okay.
So much of what we're talking about now is speculation, estimates, really. And so they're they're, so I'm having to manage this waiting room here. They they they're kind of taking more of a like, let's just wait and see approach.
Okay.
And I think they're being very thoughtful about it. So, you know, I think in the coming weeks or they'll have a better better feel. But right now we just don't know. You know, so kind of pins and needles waiting, but we just have to wait and see.
Okay, I think I I think I respect that. I just am anxious not to find ourselves at the end of May being asked to digest some proposed cuts to a school operating budget.
Yeah.
You know, on a very short time scale.
Yeah. I would just tell you that, to be honest, like, that could happen, it just.
I know, I mean, I that's why I'm raising it is because I fully expect that to happen. But I'd like to kind of push them to not let that happen quite so much.
Although here's, I will say this in that in their defense, because I think if if it pushed, if we were pushing them now to give us a number.
Sure.
Be a very high number.
Right.
Because they'd have to be ultra conservative.
Right.
They're hoping that the cuts don't materialize.
Okay.
Just I think in this scenario, Katie and I are working on, I mean, we're kind of creating our list.
Okay.
Now, you know, thinking about the logistics of that, because it's going to be extremely complicated if it's a big.
Right, right.
But so, yeah, it's it's obviously a crazy year, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, I mean, I I know I'm it's a big ask, but but if it's such a big cut, we're going, you guys are going to have to work pretty hard to to not see a reduction, a serious reduction in services to the students. And that's, you know, tough.
Yeah.
So. Anything else from school committee people about the budget or Mrs. Blake's presentation?
Good job, Katie, thank you for making it so easy to understand.
Thank you.
Yes.
Julia, I just want to mention that Shannon's been in the meeting for a long time. I just forgot, I didn't have.
Oh.
I didn't have, I didn't have the time to sort of introduce her, I couldn't squeeze it in, so hi Shannon.
Oh, sorry, Shannon, I can't see you on my screen.
No worries at all, and thank you, Kate, for that that great presentation, it was very clear, appreciate it.
Of course.
Great, okay. Good, now. The next item then is the revision to the school calendar. And Dr. Antonucci, do you want to take us through that quickly?
Yeah, yeah.
Or briefly or whatever?
Yeah, it's funny, I've heard that there's some rumors going around that I'm I'm set to make a big announcement about the. It's not a big announcement, so I just want to, I want to say that. So it comes down to this. It's about the last day of school, so right now the current last day of school is Monday, June 22. And we got there because the state's requiring districts to use the 180 school days plus five snow days, right? And then anything after that, you know, you don't have to, don't have to count. So that 185 days gets us to June 22. What I what I'm proposing, so we're still, we're still part of the Blizzard Bag, the Alternative Learning Day Bag Program this year. As you know, it's not going to be allowed after this year, which, by the way, I find ironic since we've been out of school for two and a half months and that seems to be okay, right? But so because we can still use Blizzard Bags, I I'm proposing that we retroactively count one of our snow days as a Blizzard Bag day. I propose it be Monday, March 23, just the day. And what that would allow us to do is get out of school on that Friday before, so Friday, June 19. I just think it's a more natural break, you know, in into summer. So that's my recommendation. It's not like it's not a big announcement, but it buys us that one one day. And I think by June 22, people are going to be, you know.
They're going to be up to here.
We're going to be ready to go. For what it's worth, I'm not trying to give away instructional time, but I just think, given what that instructional time is going to look like.
Right.
I'd recommend, I'm making the recommendation and I've, you know, that that's it.
Okay, great. Comments from school committee on that?
That all sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like you're trading like for like in that a remote learning day is a remote learning day, whether it's a Blizzard Bag or not.
Right, right.
Fundamentally.
Come back for a Monday on June 20.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's much more family friendly to do it on a Friday.
Yeah, I'm sorry to the people who thought we were going to close on June 1 or something, but no such luck.
Yeah.
So I think I do think we should vote, Julie, just because it's a it's a school calendar and.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's no problem, as long as it's on the agenda, I don't have a problem with us going, putting under an action item. Okay, and then the last discussion item was our second reading of the social media policy, which we reviewed for the first time on April 15. And so is there any further feedback or consideration from school committee members or or administrators on on the policy?
Not for us.
Anything?
No comments. No, no comments.
Okay, there you are. Okay, great, so that's all our discussion items. So then, action items, we have then two votes, the vote on the social media policy and on changing the last day of school. So. May I please have a motion to IJND, the Duxbury Public Schools Social Media Policy?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Kelly?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay, great. And then may I have a motion to revise the school calendar such that the last day of school falls on Friday, June 19?
So moved.
Second.
Great, so all in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay, great. So now let's reissue an invitation for public comment. Again, if you want to comment, please go to the bottom of your screen and tap on participants and then you'll see an opportunity to raise your hand. Or somehow in other, in another way, call our attention to you so that you can make a comment. Is there anybody here?
I don't think so, Julia.
I don't hear any.
I'd like to say something, but I can't figure out how to raise my hands.
We've heard you, so good, you're unmuted, so go ahead. So if you could just identify yourself first.
Sure, hi, everybody, my name is Carly Wee. I have a seventh grade daughter and a 10th grade son. And I just wanted to, I'm sorry that I missed the beginning of the meeting, so I appreciate you taking my feedback now. Just wanted to give a little feedback about their experience and just ask you guys a few questions. So I should say, I guess, I think both my children are pretty good students. They both get pretty good grades and participate in honors classes and my son's taking an AP class. He has ADHD, so this self-directed learning from home is is difficult for him. He's on a 504 and I was kind of just wanting to ask you guys, is there any type of help for somebody like that? A teacher to check in with him and say, you know, how's it going? Are you doing this? Are you doing that? Or is he just completely on his own? And also my other part of the feedback is my kids are working very hard, but it seems like, you know, they're doing like six or seven hours of homework a day. And perhaps you went over this, so I'm sorry if I'm repeating something you've already talked about, but I'm wondering, like, could there be more Zooms with teacher instruction? Also continuing the curriculum, particularly for the high school students who are going to be taking the SAT and they're going to be taking the SAT with kids from New Jersey and Connecticut, where I know that those school districts are having Zooms that provide instruction. And I'm wondering why our district can't do that. And I'm willing to hear why our school district can't do that. Because I know that you mentioned the teachers are working really hard, but I'm 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 just not, it's not clear to me why we can't do it when other districts can do it. And I'm not saying give them more work, I'm saying give them more instruction, more chance to ask questions of the teacher, like my son has this honors Latin class. He's confused, he doesn't feel like there's a time to ask the teacher questions. And he said, Mom, everyone in the class is confused. So, and I believe him, like, he's a good student, he wants to learn. And it's just, it's difficult adjustment for them, as I'm sure it is for the teachers too. But I'm wondering if there's not something that we could do to change things up a little bit, because I don't think I'm the only parent who feels like this.
Yeah, I'll just say very briefly, I appreciate your feedback and your question. It's a little, it's a little specific, so my first recommendation would be to provide that feedback directly to the teacher and or and or the building, just let me, the building principal. It it's hard to, it's hard to answer, it's sort of a very student specific question in such a broad form, but I'd strongly encourage you to.
Well, can I just interrupt you for a minute? I did not intend to be student specific. My question is really, why couldn't there be more instruction for all the students? More Zooms with instruction and maybe less homework type work?
Yeah, it's a good question. What I'd say to that, the Zoom, you know, we get that here and there. Some people think there's too much, some people don't think there's enough. You know, we do not believe that Zoom, the use of Zoom is necessarily equates to good instruction. In fact, if you've ever tried to have 24 kids in a class trying to instruct them on Zoom, I can assure you it's not the most effective way. I've actually done it, I've taught a graduate class recently on Zoom. It is extremely difficult, so I would really caution people to not equate Zoom with quality instruction. What I do think is important is teachers making connections as much as they can with students. And to the extent that we can use Zoom to do that better and to do that more, I think we want to, we want to gear geared towards that. I can tell you, we are having those conversations, this, we've had them this week extensively with our leadership team, and we are encouraging people to use it as much as possible to make sure that they're that they in fact are accessible and the kids are getting their questions in. So I hear you on that loud and clear. I just think as far as an instructional tool, almost to a, almost to a person, people don't think it's a very effective tool. So I I'm not going to change my opinion on that, it's pretty, it's pretty clear. I I do think we can use it better and maybe somewhat differently to accommodate different, the diverse, you know, needs of many, many students. But as far as a teaching tool, it's that that's where we stand on that. But I would encourage you to give some really targeted feedback and ask some specific questions of of your building administrator and the teacher tomorrow, it's, they're there for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Pantin, do you, let me, let's see, can you unmute yourself?
Does that work?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Thank you, I appreciate Carly, your question, and I appreciate the answer. I guess to follow up on Carly's request or question is, right now it seems that the platform or Duxbury's program is the children get the assignments on a Sunday or a Monday morning and they're due on a Friday. And I think what Carly was trying to raise is the state, I think, has sent out guidelines where they want a half day. The students should be in school for half day and the half be 50/50, some teacher instruction and the rest self-taught. So students have clearly have to do some self-teaching. But as Carly mentioned, the majority of the families, the kids are 90% doing the self-teaching. And I know you don't like Zoom as the way to deliver a lesson. So how are you asking teachers to deliver lessons if they can't do it for Zoom? Because right now the majority of kids are going to Khan Academy and trying to have their parents teach them, and there's really very little teacher instruction. So how are we going to fix that in this town?
I'm not sure I have an easy answer to that question. I just think people are in, you know, again, go back to my original comments and Danielle's comments. It's, you know, one size fits all approach, I don't stand by it. I had asked Ms. Pantin, you know, and you, I know you've sent several emails. And if you have specific concerns about your student, I'd recommend you address them, but I'm not going to give a broad sweeping generalization.
I'm just asking what the program is. What is.
Anything else to add? I don't have anything else to add, you know, based on, I've already kind of given.
You have an answer to the question, what's Duxbury's program? How are teachers teaching kids?
Mr. Antonucci, with all due respect, this is your job.
Ms. Adams, I have nothing else to say, this is a public comment, I appreciate the feedback, but this isn't a, this isn't a, I don't have anything else to say in this forum. Strongly recommend that people reach out, and the same people who are, you know, reaching out to us, I really appreciate, I do truly appreciate the feedback. But it's hard to answer when it's very student specific.
It's not student specific? It's other districts have figured out how to do this. And even though Zoom may not be the perfect solution, I understand the point. However, isn't something that's kind of good or provides a student with some instruction better than not?
So what I would say is, you know, we are, we are communicating with other districts and superintendents and assistant superintendents every, every day. every, every day, every week. We, we, our program, I stand by it. I'd also say we did survey families. We have a 90% satisfaction rate on our program. We're never going to please everybody, but you need to understand people are in dramatically, dramatically different circumstances at home.
Well, but I think that one thing that helps certain-
I'm not going to, I just, Ms. Adams, I'm, I'm, I don't want to get in debate over, over this call. I have nothing else to add during, during the public comment.
Julia, can I say something?
Okay, but I would just like,
I'm going to speak for a minute. I think from the feedback that I've gotten, there seems to be like there's a huge misunderstanding or misconception or about how instruction is being delivered. And I think the question is less, what is each teacher doing as to what are the expectations? So Danielle, maybe, you know, people can, I'm not sure how, I'm just trying to get the information across the way it's been told to me. Like, so if the work comes in on a Monday morning, how is instruction being disseminated so that work can be done by Friday, other than it being self-directed? I think that, if I'm, if I'm getting it right, I think that's sort of what's going on here. That's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, so I just want to comment briefly, and again, this isn't really the appropriate forum, but our expectation of teachers is that they're not simply posting assignments and having the kids be on their own for the week. So we've asked them to do a combination of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And what that means is if they're a math teacher and the best way to get across new math concepts that we've been introducing is to record themselves on videos that the students can watch at their, the time that they're working on math, then we'd ask them to post that. Some teachers are opting to put some of the wonderful resources from Khan Academy along with the new instruction that's happening. So, and some teachers may be using the Zoom more so to connect social emotional learning, just to check in with students, see if there's any questions about the content that was posted. But we haven't had any requirements of our teachers to present new concept in a live format. However, I think if, I think we certainly don't expect students to be reaching out to their teachers if they're having trouble on the remote learning that's being presented. So it needs to be a combination of pre-recorded as well as live instruction that's happening. And if, if there's more that students need, I think the teachers need to hear that from the, the parents directly, because we're hearing that some students are taking an extremely long time to complete the work. And that some students are flying through it and I think the teachers need that feedback. So we have, we are monitoring the work that's being given out by all the teachers. We see the remote learning plans of our special education students. We see the team assignments from the middle school. We're part of the Google classrooms for the elementary students. And so we're, we're seeing what's going out. And if we have concerns individually with teachers presenting what looks to be just like simply homework and not necessarily new instruction, we can address that on a case-by-case basis, but I think we have some teachers that are doing an exceptional job with this and others may not be getting feedback from parents directly, but for us to make sweeping changes to our, our learning plan wouldn't make sense. The same way, we don't expect that teachers make a consequence for the whole class that may be individualized for one student. So that's why we really need to know individually if there's challenges that families are facing. We are committed to providing accommodations if students are on 504s or IEPs, or even if they are not and they have some specific learning needs. We will work with every family and I haven't met one teacher in the Ducksbury School District that has refused to work with a parent directly to meet the needs of that student when they are directly involved with that process. But when things are brought up at school committee, that doesn't really give us the opportunity to be specific if someone's not meeting a child's need the way they should be. We have really open and wonderful educators here that are willing to work with us. So that's why we kind of bring it back to the school level. And the families that we've heard from haven't really started at that teacher level. They're kind of going right to the, right to the level of what, what are our expectations globally? And I think that our expectations globally are that we know that the teachers know the students best, so we wouldn't make a sweeping generalization about what's best for an AP calculus class. We need, we need the teachers that are the experts to be able to make those recommendations.
Julia, we have, it looks like Mr. Edwards has, has-
Okay. Great. Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Edwards? Please?
Hi, yes.
Great.
Thank you for taking my question and comment. I just wanted to actually back up what Mrs. Panton, Mrs. Wee had mentioned earlier on. I don't think that it's a specific student question that is being asked by either of them. And also, you know, we have four children going through the program for middle school and high school right now. And they're having a variety of experiences between the four of them from, from somewhat good to, to somewhat really challenging. And those experiences are are from overwork to under-led and under-instructed. And so, you know, I think that it's, it's really not, it's not even across the board. And I just wanted to kind of mention that as part of what we're going through here at the Edwards household. I don't have too many more comments beyond that, but I do, I do echo what Mrs. Wee and what Mrs. Panton also said.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other, anybody else who'd like to speak? If you'd like to speak and can't work out how to raise your hand on Zoom, you can just unmute yourself and introduce yourself if you'd like. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so I hope I'm not missing anybody.
Yeah, Julia, I'd just like to comment.
Of course.
And, and I think, you know, Dr. Klingman and Dr. Antonucci said this earlier. And I think the disconnect between the, the parent feedback and the district perspective is there can't be a district approach which is going to be effective for all of our students and all of our children. You know, Mr. Edwards mentioned he has four different children and they're having very different experiences. I think, and when people ask me about feedback, it is really important that there is every opportunity given to communicate directly with the, the teacher in the classroom, because what both Dr. Antonucci and Dr. Klingman are saying is they know your student best and they're going to be very much supported by the district to do whatever they can to possibly best support your students. If you find that discussion is ineffective, the next step up is to talk with the building administrators. So at a school committee level, all of you have concerns that are, are really very reasonable and of course, very appropriate, but I think they're not necessarily applicable to a district-wide discussion unless first, you've really engaged your teacher and have been frustrated by the lack of response. And second, engage the support of the people or the direct supervisor, supervisors of the faculty, which are the building administrators. Because, you know, Mr. Edwards, you said, you know, you have one student who's kind of blasting through the work and another who's completely overwhelmed. And I think that's something that's across the district, that there's not a consistency of experience. So we need your support to try and advocate for your children, the students, with their teachers directly. And if you find that the teachers are unresponsive, then you have to go from there.
But, um, if I could just say, I mean, is that the policy comes from the district and the school committee down as to whether the curriculum should continue? Should my son continue learning Algebra II or does it stop? How are we going to approach the teaching technique? Is, am I, is my understanding incorrect? I mean, it's not teachers deciding on a case-by-case basis, oh, I'm not going to teach these kids. There's an approach that has, to my understanding, been passed down from you guys as to what the best practice is.
I'd like to say for Carly to pick up, you know, again, I agree with you. Some kids are doing great and some kids aren't. And I think our question is, what is the town's program? The homework comes out on a Sunday and it's due on a Friday. And I'm in a unique situation where I have two children in different schools. Once, in public, he has Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a rotating block schedule. They do chat and Google teaching. And so he knows every Monday, he's up at nine and he's with his classmates and he's with his teachers and he's learning new stuff and there's grades and quizzes and tests. And he has a schedule and if there's a chance for questions, he can do it. And so that's their program. And I guess what we're trying to ask is, what is Ducksbury's? And we keep getting back saying, just reach out to your teacher and ask them what it is.
I want to clarify, you know our program. You, you might not agree with it, Ms. Panton. You've made it quite clear in several emails and tonight. You keep on referring to Marshfield. I find it ironic to everybody here, the school committee. You know, Marshfield, I talked to him last week. They don't, they haven't allowed Zoom. They don't, they haven't allowed Zoom until Monday. Monday. So it's kind of a funny thing, like some people want one thing, some people want another. We stand by our program right now.
We're just asking what it is.
What, you know, that, you, you just repeated what it is. We're not changing our model. It's been extremely well communicated by the building principals. So I, I, I'm sorry you're dissatisfied. It's, but we're not just, we stand by it and we'll continue to improve it as much as we can, but that, that is our model. And 90% of the people have expressed deep satisfaction with it. And again, the specifics we'll address, because, because every student deserves it. But beyond that, so.
As far as a school committee's role is with regard to curriculum, we, you can reference all the school committee policies on the website. And I think you'll notice that there isn't really no role for a school committee in dictating how teachers interact with students, either in a normal school day or you know, in the situation we're in. So we have considered what Dr. Antonucci and Dr. Klingman have told us as far as their approach and the work that they're doing under these circumstances as being the kind of workable equivalent or the workable, it's not an equivalent, the workable solution to the situation that the district finds itself in. But it's clear that every student has a different home situation, a different education situation. And so, you know, there is really no role for school committee in, in anything other than the policies which we have in place and which we feel are being implemented to the best, the best way they can be under the current circumstances. If you feel that having looked at those policies, you feel that what's being offered is in somehow contradicting our policy, then that's a school committee issue. But as far as how instruction is delivered, that's a management issue which is not what we get involved in.
Well, I really appreciate your answering my question. I appreciate that. And so just to clarify, who does make those decisions?
Well, on a day-to-day level, teachers make decisions about how best to deliver the curriculum under the instructions that we have or that they would have from their subject leader, from the principal and from the district administration. And then also the standards that Commissioner Riley has put out regarding what the priorities should be. And the priority is to focus on the core standards that will help students to be prepared for next year. So, you know, there's an acknowledgement at the state level that nothing that's being delivered now is anywhere close to what would be delivered if we were in the buildings or the students were in the buildings and the staff were in the building. So, you know, that's, that's what Peter was referencing is terms of kind of the chain of, or the complaints procedure is to start with your, start with a teacher.
Well, in fact, I personally have, but I was trying to raise a larger issue, which I think, you know, everybody's experiencing district-wide, which is a lack of instruction. And just sort of like doling out homework, which I, I don't really know anybody who I've spoken to whose, whose child is really getting instruction, like similar to what Mrs. Panton is referring to about the Marshfield schools or what my friends report from Connecticut and New Jersey and Hingham. This seems different. And I'm just wondering, you know, who makes these decisions and why is that person not open to feedback?
Well, I think I, I would disagree with your view that we're not open to feedback. I think we're, the school district has surveyed parents and we're, we're having these comment, discussion that we're having right now. But I would point out to you that in-
Well, the person-
If you would let me finish, please. I would point out to you that Commissioner Riley has cited as, as remote learning tools, you know, a group videos and audio conference calls, one-on-one phone calls, email, work packets, projects, reading lists, online learning platforms. There's a whole range of resources that the state has encouraged a school districts to use. So, you know, it sounds as if at least some of our teachers and many of our teachers are employing a variety of techniques to connect with students. And some students are easier to connect with than others. So, you know, I think that, that from a school committee point of view, there's nothing that I'm hearing from our administrators or in, in the, from the community that would suggest that they're not doing what the state is expecting them to do or that they're not doing what our policies set the standard for. So as far as school committee's role, I think that that's where we are. I mean, that's my personal view. And if you have a beef about your child or your children and your children's teachers in different subjects, then that's not something that school committee can help you with.
Well, I appreciate that, but you're sort of mischaracterizing my comments. It's not really a beef with my child's teachers or my children's experience only. I'm just trying to raise, and you know, meeting the state minimum, I personally thought that Ducksbury was a school district that was trying to exceed the minimum requirements of the state and that we hope-
Now you're mischaracterizing my comments. I was reading Ms., Commissioner Riley's objectives and aspirations. But if you want to call them minimum standards, that's fine. I think that, you know, there is no one-size-fits-all.
I thought you had referred to some minimums.
No, it'd be useful perhaps for you to read his, his-
Okay, I mean, I don't get into an argument.
Well, I, I, I just, you know, and, and, you know, the school district doesn't need me or anyone else to defend them. But I think you're making a general characterization that Ducksbury is somehow deficient relative to New Jersey, Connecticut, Hingham. And I think the point is, the experiences are widely different for every student in the district, but none of them are having an experience which is as positive as it would have been had they been in class. So in the context of the environment, it's a, it's, I think, a mischaracterization to say the district is somehow failing our students. Because many of our students are doing okay and they're not doing great. There's probably not a student who's doing great. So I think the point is to generalize the people you've spoken to or your own family's experience to the entire experience of the district. I think discredits the work that the district is doing in our administration and the, in the diligence which they're applying to a circumstance that none of us have been through before. So I think the, the message is, please don't generalize your family experience to a universally experience in the community.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Peter, I'm sorry. I, I just don't believe that I was doing that. I was asking a question about why we don't have more instruction and less homework? And that could apply to anybody, not just my children. My children are actually good students doing fine, but-
But other students are, are maybe getting different experiences than your students are. Your students, you know, you have two students in the district. Your students, you know, you have two students in the district, universal experience that you're describing. So I think, well, they are not being properly served. The faculty has shown every willingness to be responsive to feedback. And that's, so I guess that's where, if there's a little bit of defensiveness, and I'm not trying to be defensive, it's to, you know, associate your individual family experience with the district-wide universal experience. And I think you were doing that, because you were comparing us to other districts that are doing things differently.
True. But that's district-wide.
So.
But, I mean, at a benefit, my children have seven teachers, and so that's 14 teachers between the two of them, 14 teachers who are not providing the kind of experience that might be in other districts. And then we have other parents on this Zoom saying the same thing. So presumably, those teachers are also not doing it. So maybe it's worth an investigation.
Yeah, Ms. Wee, I guess, a final comment is, I know you've had extensive conversations with the principal already. I'd recommend you have another conversation with them if you're still concerned. I guess, there's a big difference between not being communicated with and not agreeing with what you're hearing. So I would say, I'd be glad to have the principal reach out to you tomorrow. But I think we need to end the public comment at this point, because this is the forum.
Yeah. So as chairman of the meeting, I'd like to draw a close to public comments, unless there are public comments on a different subject matter. Because I think we've covered this one. So, Don, are there any, are there any hands up or anything that you can see?
Mr. Edwards, still, is that from before, Mr. Edwards, or did you want to say something else, make a final comment?
That is from before. But what other topics might you entertain conversation?
Well.
Public comment. Yeah, if you have public.
You know, the school committee is responsible, our scope of responsibility covers, you know, the budget, which we have talked about, the school year, which we've also talked about in this meeting. So, you know, or any other issues that are arising. But I think that we've had a pretty kind of robust discussion of views on the curriculum as it's being delivered in particular families. And I think, you know, we've all listened, and maybe it's time to move on.
Sure. And so, I guess my final comment would be, I think, there would be, it would be helpful with more student-teacher check-ins of some sort of communication between them as well, you know, and kind of echoing a little bit of what Mrs. Wee was talking about a moment ago. My sister-in-law is a teacher in New Hampshire, and school was much less interrupted between what happened prior to remote learning and what happened after remote learning. They went almost instantaneously to a remote school day with all the classes, with all the teachers doing their instruction. And I, you know, I heard what was mentioned regarding Zoom classes not being effective and things like that. But, you know, remote college has been in existence for, since the mid-'90s. The students have had their own personal laptops in seventh grade. There's a lot, I think, that is an opportunity to provide for them for remote learning, better teacher-student connection from home to home, whether or not in school. And I hope that is just taken to heart, you know, as a final note. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else?
I think Drew.
Yeah, this seems minor relative to the previous discussion, but it has nothing to do with that at all. So maybe that'll be well received. I'm just, and this is probably something that doesn't have an answer now, but I know the question is starting to get asked around some of the youth sports, virtual tables in the last couple of weeks. And that has to do with access to school facilities and property in the summertime. So, and it's a moving target, and I think everybody appreciates that. But I, you probably are well aware, but there's a growing discussion about, okay, how do we not make up for lost time, but are we going to be able to maybe take advantage of the summertime to get some kids back together? And to do so, I think we have, you know, if the policies allow it and so forth, if all the signals are there, but we don't have physical space to do it, that'll be a real bummer for folks. So again, it's more introducing the topic than looking for discussion and hoping at some point, when it's more relevant, that there'll be some answers for that community of people who are going to be looking to get people together when we're allowed to get together.
Yeah, Mr., I appreciate the question, and super important. And I can't wait to get these kids back, you know, get back youth sports and all the activities. And what I would say is, we have to take our guidance, you know, from the state. And as soon as we, as soon as we get guidance from them, that we can, you know, safely welcome people onto our property and to our facilities, we will. I can't imagine we would put any, put stricter restrictions on than the state would. So, you know, kind of stay tuned. But we'll be ready to roll as soon as we get the green light from the state.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else with comments? Okay. I'm not hearing, am I missing anyone? Okay, so, let's then move to adjourn. So, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor? So Matt?
Aye.
Peter, you'll have to unmute yourself. Great. Shannon, can you unmute yourself?
Aye.
And Kelly?
Aye.
And then Julia, aye. Okay, great. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.